You didn't get the memo. Sweated for about four hours.
I didn't get it, no. The last one was pretty much. It didn't mean anything.
You didn't get the memo?
No, I didn't get the memo. I wore my red shirt yesterday.
Did I? Did I?
I wore my red shirt yesterday.
This guy goes the most.
I can work my turn.
But I was nobody's fault.
Okay. You got your phone on silent?
Yeah.
I'll do it. Yes, on the face. We good to go? We ready to start?
Yeah.
Testing. May I have your attention, please? Ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention, please? Thank you. Can they, can you all hear me out there?
Yes.
Good evening, Roma SD family and guests. We're about to start this meeting. It is now 6:01 PM. And I call this regular meeting of the Roma Independent School District Board of Trustees being held as Wednesday, May 29, 2024, to order. Let the record show that this meeting was duly posted according to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Agenda item one is road call. Board Vice President, Mr. Jaime Escolat Senior.
Present.
Board Secretary, Mrs. Yadira E. Barrera.
Here.
Board Member, Mrs. Mary Lou G. Cruz.
Here.
Board Member, Mr. E. Garza Jr.
Present.
Board Member, Mrs. Karina Mascorro.
Here.
Board Member, Mr. Joel P. Moreno Jr. And myself, Board President, Mr. Ricardo A. Perez.
Present.
Let the record show, we do have a quorum in attendance at this regular meeting. The next agenda items will be Agenda Item Number Two and Three. This is our invocation and pledge of allegiance this evening. The invocation will be delivered by Trustee, Mr. E. Garza Jr., and the pledge will be led by Trustee, Mr. Jaime Escolat Senior. Would everyone please stand?
Please bow our heads. Gracious and loving Creator, we come before you today with hearts full of gratitude for the opportunity to serve our community as members of the Roma Independent School District Board. We acknowledge the importance of our collective responsibility and the impact we have on the lives of our students, their families, and our dedicated educators. We humbly ask for your guidance and wisdom as we navigate the challenges and decisions that lie before us, granting us the insight to make choices that prioritize the well-being and growth of our students, fostering an environment that nurtures their academic, social, and emotional development. Help us to remember that every student who walks through our doors is unique, with their own talents, dreams, and challenges. May we always strive to create an inclusive and equitable educational system that values and respects the diversity of our student body and encourages their individual growth and success. Amen.
Amen. Please join me. Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Thank you, Mr. Garza and Mr. Escolat. We'll go on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is Student and Staff Recognition, and we have several, several presentations. The first will, will involve our athletes. So I'm going to call on our athletic director, Coach Max Habacker Jr., to make his presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the school board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to start tonight's recognition by inviting our Roma Middle School Girls District Champion Swimming Team up to the stage. Our young ladies are led by Coach Clemente Martinez and Marisa Estrada. These young ladies have earned back-to-back district champions, and I'm gonna go through a short list of names and recognitions. Let's start off with Ms. Maria Jose Olbera. Gritzi Trevino. Isabella Garza. Valentina Ramirez. Regina Hernandez. Chloe Garza. Shitla Lipeña. Delami Vasquez. Alondra Carrizales. And Aina Garcia. Congratulations, ladies. Again, these, these young ladies won back-to-back district championships. Another regional qualifier and district champion is Alondra Carrizales. District champion and regional qualifier. This group of young men earned individual accolades, and I'd like to start off with our first team all district pitcher, Andres Trevino. Yan Guerra. Honorable mention at right field, Alberto Garcia. Honorable mention at left field, Mr. Gilberto Contreras. Mention. And Cecilia Benitez. Congratulations. Athletic presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach Habacker. My academics teams are once again district champions. The following students placed in their respective event. Students, as I call your name, please make your way to the front. In accounting, Karime Silva. Mathemar X, Adriel Rosales, fifth place. In the event. Para Martinez, fifth place. Eduardo Botelho, third place. Sara Escobar, first place. Shailam Peña, second place. In the event of social studies, Josiel Marines, first place. Juliana Marines, third place. Eric Rodriguez, sixth place. Fourth. Sixth place. In team awards, our mighty gladiators won first place in computer science with a team of. Losales and Oscar Gonzalez. We also won social studies, and the team members are Josiel Marines, Juliana Marines, Eric Rodriguez, and Gael Rodriguez. And we had a science top scorer, Biology, Irvin Salinas. In spelling, as a team, we got second place. The team consisted of Leo Canales, Victor Guerra, Pedro Peña, and Jacqueline Sines. In current, current issues and events. Team members. Vasquez Canjiri, Briseida Ramos, Isabella Muñoz, Elizondo, and Mario Canales. Students qualified for regionals in headline. State qualifiers. Headline. Aldo Mena and Isabella. And Emma Escobar. And community members and board members, I just wanted to add that this year, we won district by a huge margin. Not even by adding the point from the second until. I'm super proud of our, of our students, coaches, and director for the hard work and dedication. Two, and this is our three years in a row to win districts, and there it comes.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. The next. Career and Technology Education, and I call on Mr. Jaime Escolat Jr. to make the presentation.
Good afternoon. Acknowledgements. We're talking, we'll be recognizing students accomplishments that they've accomplished throughout the spring semester. I'd like to call first on the GTN program, Arts and Audiovisual Technology and Communications. Can I have the video production team come up to the podium, please? And Ms. Yunes Ortega. Video production team. Okay, we have one of the members representing today, Mr. Nicolas Lopez. The other members are Daniel Variantos and Ryan Garza. This team did exceptionally well this year. They placed third in state, which is remarkable, and seventh in the nation as a video production team. Let's give them a round of applause. Members Bruno Garza. And Amy Huerta. If you're here, please report to the front. So we're very proud of our students. Congratulations. All the students that made it to Skills U.S.A. Your name, please come up. Shanta Barrera, Daniel Variantos, Seir. Romeo Garcia, Arnoldo Garza, Bruno Garza, Orlando Garza III, Ryan Garza, Jorge Guerra, Yasmin Guerra, Noel Guerrero, Amy Huerta Chavez, Nicolas Lopez. Okay, let's.
Better to see them not, better to see them not. Not a note, they get a point.
Alaisa Alanis, Digital Communications and Design, first place. Congratulations to this outstanding group. Competition. Congratulations. Teachers, teacher, Ms. Emily Flores, Ms. Lupita Ramirez, and Ms. Mirna Mendiola. And the student that will be recognized. Arts and Crafts, earning reserve champion at the Starr County Youth Fair. And that'll be it for this, this group, so we're ready for the picture. Okay, the next group. Entomology. Can I have all the, both entomology teams come up? And individual awardees as well. Sponsor is Mr. Joey Ramon. The entomology team did extremely well this year. They were district champs, second in Area 10, 15th in Texas FFA, State CDEs. The, the winners are Gariel Narváez. Jesse Ramon. Be honoring them for Starr County Awards, Starr County Fair Awards. I call upon students Mario Canales, Kaylin Garcia. Nathaniel. Okay, I'm also gonna go ahead and call the Rio Grande Valley Livestock Show Award recipients. That, that would also be with Mr. We had Mr. My, we had student Mario Canales earned reserve. And class champion for market lamb. At the same event, Mr. Grand Champion in Photography. Grand Champion in Ag Product ID. And was the 2024. Goat Showman. Kaylin Garcia earned Reserve Grand Champion Farm Shop Showman. Nathaniel Lopez got Class Champion Smoker. Kaylin Ramon got Class Champion Photography. And Grand Champion Ag Product ID. This year, we're proud to announce that Kaylin Garcia received a scholarship at Texas A&amp;M University.
Terani Garza, Luis Flores.
Will represent Roma SD as a district elementary. 2024. In April. Two essays submit. On the two essays. Using the agreed-upon method, I tabulated the rank. It is with great pleasure they announced the Roma SD Elementary and Secondary Teacher. It is with great pleasure they announced the Roma ISD Elementary and Secondary Teacher. Principal of Enmadera Elementary is. The district's Secondary Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Jessica Alanis from Roma. Principal for Roma Middle School is Mr. Daniel Gonzalez.
We had, uh, let's see, a total of, was it seven campuses or seven teachers? Was, I don't remember. How many teachers were there selected originally? How many campuses for? A big round of applause. Well, I believe. With the business portion of our meeting. You all have a great rest of the evening. Trustee, Mr. Raul P. Moreno Jr. has joined the meeting at. District Superintendent Mr. Carlos Gonzalez Jr. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is the Consent Agenda, Item 6A through 6I. If any of my fellow colleagues have any questions, the presenter. Tech and PMS Director, Mr. Manuel Garcia. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alanis, for being available.
I shall move that we approve the consent agenda items A through I as being presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? If none, there's a motion on the floor by Trustee Cruz and seconded by Trustee Garza to approve Agenda Item. So by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I abstain from lasalitas.
Thank you. Seven in favor, none opposed, and two abstentions. And Item Number Seven, Report on Federal Grant Applications for 20. Dr. Adrian Guerra. Dr. Guerra?
Good evening, members of the board. The entitled amount is $100,300. The application is due September the first, 2024, and the expected submission of. For that if needed. The second application is a special. There's two parts to this one. The Idea B Formula part, we're getting one. For Idea B preschool, we have. Due September first, 2024, and the expected submission. Twenty-fifth, 2024. The third application is the ESA, Every Student Success Act. That includes Title One, Title Two, Title Three, and Title. For Title Two, you can see that these amounts go up. What I just announced. To get additional money. And just for your reference, so you can understand how that works. On the. To give an opportunity for public comment. So this sheet. And.
That the final amount, which you get the maximum. I mean, you did.
Along with Mr. Alanis who set up the budget. I was not involved with that, but.
Okay, we'll go to Agenda Item Number Eight. Discuss and take possible action on adopting the Roma ISD's Master's Degree Initiative for dual and Roman teachers. The presenter will be our district.
Good evening, everybody. Receive this. The Roma Independent Schools. Certified Teachers. Current Qualifications. The Master's Degree or 18 Hours Beyond Masters in Subject. The allocation of resources for this initiative will be determined based on district needs. So we think it'll be very fruitful. The commitment to the district would be that they stay.
Any other questions for Mr. Escobar?
It is, the requirement is for the teacher to be certified a teacher. And this is to further their education and give them an opportunity. It will only cover to which.
Hours would be half of that.
Well, it's either. Have the required, the district has to look for their needs at the time. So of course, the secondary teachers will be the ones getting, will be priority for us and core areas.
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion on the floor by Trustee Barrera and.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Good evening, all members. Mr. Gonzalez, Mr.
Assistant next year. So we wanted to.
The annual NW reports also present. Last school psychologist services. Is that correct?
They're gonna be available.
Okay, see, there's a lot of students. There is a difference in the.
She's local, yes.
It's almost a 39.6% increase. They weren't able to submit a bid. Casualty and.
I can attest to that.
And more in the coast area.
It just seems like a quite a hefty increase, and we have not had any claims.
Not major claims, no. Just minor accidents here and there.
Usually if I just give my automobile insurance a call. Any further discussion?
Approved Agenda. And received three proposals. $60,661. I think that's the question that everybody was gonna have.
Consideration and Possible Action to Award RFP 24-96 Student Athletic and Voluntary Student Accident.
Where are they from, sir?
From Harlingen.
Harlingen. Have we done business with them before?
We've had him for over 20 years, I think.
Okay, to make what that is because, go ahead.
400 feet. It's. Department for Food Service, to deliver food.
Yeah, without the box.
Without the box. The box is a 16-foot box, similar to the one.
Is there a motion?
I shall move.
Possible action, either to renew the district's employee.
Be complaining about.
Bullcroc.
Or maybe their medication's not getting covered or something.
We haven't heard of any major complaint.
No.
There is. Item Number 19, Ask Presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 One, two, three, four, five, six. And those opposed?
I'll go against. I would like to stay with Lou Conspino.
Okay, sir. So it's a six in favor, one opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 20. Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Lease the Roma ISD. 78584. And five for the public purpose.
In Roma, Texas, 78584, to the Roma Memorial Post, 9175. OTC South is located at 103 East Lincoln Street in Roma, Texas, is no longer being used by the district and is not needed in the building to the Roma Memorial Post, number 9175 Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States for the use of conducting VFW meetings and to provide veterans benefits with which serve as public purpose. I further move to authorize the superintendent to execute the lease agreement with the Roma Memorial Post, number 9175 as presented, subject to the provision of insurance as required in the lease agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If none, there's a motion on the floor by Trustee Escobar and seconded by Trustee Garza to approve Agenda Item Number 20 as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Seven in favor, none opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Is it like yearly or is it like for how long?
What?
The dollar. The dollar.
The lease?
The lease.
No, not the lease. Is it like not a
It's a five-year lease.
But boom.
And renewable, 35 years.
Okay. All right, Agenda Item Number 21 is closed session. We will, we will have a report on the district-wide intruder detection, audit, report findings. The presenter will be our District Director for School Safety and Security, Mr. Ildefonso Saldiva Jr. I'm sorry that I stumbled over that one. Okay. Mr. Ildefonso Saldiva Jr. There. The time is now 8:09 PM. And the Roma Independent School District Board of Trustees will go into closed session as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.074 to discuss Agenda Item Number 21. No action will be taken in closed session. We respectfully request that our audience remain in attendance in the Manuel Guerra Building while we are in closed session. The board is now in closed session.